Call the meeting to order if we could, please. Mr. Chairman, Fisher, would you please leave us an invocation, please, sir?
Yes, sir. Let's bow our heads. God of our weary years and God of our silent tears, you have brought us this far along on our way. We give you thanks for this day in this area we call home. We pray for all those involved in education as they begin a new school year. And we pray for all those who served to protect, those who served in the armed services, law enforcement, fire and rescue, the emergency room, and those who serve in humanitarian efforts around the world. We ask for your guidance and direction in our work and our decisions for the citizens of Frederick County. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Supervisor Lofton, would you please leave us the pledge, please, sir?
Would you stand and face the flag for our pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, we've had a request from a board member to move Tab L, which is the pump and haul request, up ahead of the school request, which is essentially we'd be flipping Tabs K and Tab L.
Okay.
That suits the board.
All right. How would the board like to handle that one?
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Motion approves, are second?
Second.
Mr. Chairman.
Second, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, pose no. Motion carries, will amend the agenda. Just for informational sake, we understand that there was registration at Stonewall this evening, folks that might also desire to be here and take part in our meeting later on, so we'll delay it as far as we can. Thank you. All right. Consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, we've proposed Tabs A, D, E, and M for the consent agenda.
All right. How would the board like to handle it?
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of Items A, D, E, and M on the consent agenda.
All right. If our motion is our second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, pose no. All right. Citizen comment agenda items only that are not subject to public hearing? Anyone sign up, Mr. Tibbs?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have one speaker signed up tonight, it's Mr. George Hughes.
Mr. Hughes, sir, welcome. You could have your name, magisterial district, and limit your comments to three minutes, please.
All right. I don't want to over dominate this microphone, but anyway, I come with two things in mind tonight. And one is, is that I think that the whole budgetary process that we go through, as the county as a whole, is shameful in that nobody really knows what you're planning to do or what your thoughts about the plans are. And a part of this is involving the school, which is going to come up later. And the other thing I thought about while I was mowing the lawn today, you know, we have this huge thing about term limits on the federal level. But by God, I think we need term limits on the local level. Local bureaucrats, local elected officials, they stick around forever and the bad practices keep on coming.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else, Mr. Tibbs?
Yes, sir.
All right. For the supervisors' comments, are there any? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on. Minutes were adopted under consent, there was one change, a cut and paste error that had been corrected. The corrected copy is in front of everyone. We've adopted those as corrected under consent. Committee appointments. Sure there were any. Historic resources, we're still waiting, is that correct, sir? You pecking?
We're still waiting, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, I'm sorry.
And then, no remaining appointments for August, September, or October. All right. That was easy. All right. Request of the Commissioner revenue for refunds. Mr. Tierney.
Mr. Chairman, we have three requests. The first is for fourteen thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars and fifty-three cents. This has been reviewed and approved by the county attorney, and we're going to take any questions if you have them.
Questions, Mr. Tierney. How would the board like to handle the request?
Mr. Chairman, I move for the approval of the refunds as stated in the memo.
Motion to approve, is our second?
And appropriation to do so.
And appropriations, is our second?
Second.
And the second, is there any discussion? Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Ewing?
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion carries.
The next is a request for refund in the amount of sixteen thousand nine hundred and sixty-one dollars and nine cents, and this is to Valley Proteins, and it involves vehicle licensing. Again, this has been reviewed and approved by the county attorney.
Right, sir. How would the board like to handle it?
Mr. Chairman, I would move for approval of the refund and the supplemental appropriation.
All right. Motion to approve both, is our second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
The second, is there any discussion? Supervisor Ewing?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion carries.
And the third, Mr. Chairman, is a refund in the amount of three thousand two hundred and sixty-seven dollars and thirty cents to Alley Financial Vault, and again involves vehicles that were sold or moved out of the county, and has been reviewed and approved by the county attorney.
All right. How would the board like to handle this one?
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of three thousand two hundred and sixty-seven dollars and thirty cents to Alley Financial Vault and the corresponding supplemental appropriation.
Motion to approve both, is our second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second, is there any discussion? Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Ewing?
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion carries. All right, that brings us to the finance committee report.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, let me just get to that item, please. Okay. Finance committee meeting, the finance committee met on July the 19th, and the following items were considered on consent agenda, which were Items number one through twelve, Items number sixteen and eighteen, and Items number twenty. I would make a motion to approve those items on consent agenda.
Second.
Heard the motion, and the second, is there any discussion? Supervisor Ewing?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion carries.
And that will take us to Item number thirteen. And that was, the interim county administrator requested a general fund supplemental appropriation in the amount of one million, one hundred forty-four thousand, seven hundred eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents. This amount represents unspent fiscal year seventeen capital contingency funds. Originally, we had approved a capital contingency fund several years ago of about three million dollars, and these funds have historically been carried over from year to year. Out of those funds will come funds that we need to expend for the new convenience center in Stevenson, and we have yet to been given a complete cost on that, so I would move for approval.
Motion to approve, is our second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
And the second? Is there any discussion? Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Ewing?
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion carries.
Item number fourteen, the planning director requested a fiscal year eighteen supplemental appropriation in the amount of eight thousand, one seventy-five, ninety-four. This amount represented a duplicate proffer payment to be refunded to the developer. The committee recommends approval, and I would so move.
Heard the motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
The second? Is there any discussion? Supervisor Ewing?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion carries.
This takes us to Item number fifteen, the Parks and Recreation Director requested a fiscal year eighteen general fund supplemental appropriation in the amount of sixty-five thousand. The amount represents proffer funds for the design and engineering of the Abrams Creek Trail Phase One. The request had been approved by the Parks and Recreation Commission. The committee recommended approval contingent upon satisfactory easement assurances from all property owners, and I would so move.
Heard the motion, is there a second?
Second.
And the second? Is there any discussion? Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Ewing?
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion carries.
This takes us to Item number nineteen, the Parks and Recreation Director requested, requests the donation received in fiscal year seventeen for the play fund in the amount of three thousand, four hundred thirty-three dollars and forty-four cent be reserved, subject to future appropriation. The balance will be reduced by the financial assistance provided during fiscal year seventeen in the amount of eight hundred twenty-nine dollars and seventy-five cents. No local funds are required. The committee recommended approval, and I would so move.
Heard the motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second, is there any discussion? Supervisor Ewing?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion carries.
And we had two items at the end of our agenda, which were Items number twenty-one and twenty-two. Item number twenty-one was the VA Corp. and VFIS will present information on the workman's compensation for volunteers' accident and injury coverage. We had discussion at our meeting, and representatives will come back to us at our September meeting with additional information, so this is basically informational only, and more information will be provided to the board as we have updates. Item number twenty-two was regarding the real property tax relief for elderly and disabled, and we have started discussions of that in hopes that we will be able to make some recommendations to the board before individuals would need to apply for the next fiscal year. So those two items were informational only, and that would conclude my report.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. That'll bring us to the public hearing, outdoor festival permit request of Grove Winchester Harley-Davidson Grove Summer Party. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, this is a, this is a request that has come before us a number of times before. There's been no incidents in the past, but the applicant is represented here, if there are any questions.
All right, sir. Any questions of the applicant? All right. How would the board like to handle this request?
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion for approval.
This is a public hearing, I'm sorry.
Sorry?
Yes.
Absolutely. This is a public hearing, would anyone like to comment concerning the proposed outdoor festival permit request of Grove Winchester Harley-Davidson Grove Summer Party? Anyone at all? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing portion. How would the board like to handle the request?
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion for approval of the festival permit request by Grove Winchester Harley-Davidson.
We have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second? Is there any discussion? Anyone? All right. Supervisor Ewing?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion carries. Number two, under public hearings, an outdoor festival permit request of Zachary Tyler, Tyer, Thier? Hope I'm not pronouncing it badly. Valley Fusion Festival Two. Anyone representing this one?
Mr. Chairman, this, for general information, this is the second year of this request. The event was held last year. The location is on Merriman's Lane, and the applicants are here, if you have questions of them.
Welcome, gentlemen, anything you'd like to add?
Good evening, Chairman. My name is Zach Thayer, and this is my business partner, Artie Wonder. Thank you for the opportunity to speak in front of you. We're a second-year annual music festival event happening on September sixteenth. Just a one-day, one-night event to feature local up-and-coming artists and musicians in an effort to try and bring more nationally acclaimed and touring bands to the area to revitalize the culture of Winchester.
Questions, anyone for these gentlemen?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Sir. Supervisor Ewing?
One-day festival?
Yes, one day, one night. We will offer overnight camping for the first time this year.
So that's why you're asking for sixteenth and seventeenth?
Yes, yeah, the, our gates will close at midnight on the sixteenth, and they will reopen at eight AM the following morning, and close again at 12 PM, noon, on the seventeenth.
Allow the people to exit, uh, leave.
Other questions, anyone?
One question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I believe you were here last year, did you have anybody complaining about your music and noise?
We had someone come up from an adjacent neighborhood around five PM and just ask what was going on. Not a complaint, just saying that they were unaware of the festival happening.
So those that were around did not complain, correct?
Yeah, not a complaint, no.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any others? Anyone? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing, would anyone like to comment concerning this application for outdoor festival permit request of Zachary Thier, Valley Fusion Festival Two? Anyone at all? We'll close the public hearing portion. How would the board like to handle this one?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move for acceptance.
Move for approval?
Yes, sir.
Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Is there any further discussion? Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Ewing?
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion carries. Item number three is outdoor festival permit request to the Rotary Club of Winchester, Shenandoah Valley Apple Harvest Festival.
Mr. Chairman, this is the forty-second annual event to be held at the Frederick County Fairgrounds, September sixteenth and seventeenth. And again, this has been held at least a number of times before at the fairgrounds, and I believe there are applicants here representing, or the applicant is represented, I'm sorry.
Anything you folks would like to add?
I'm just here to answer any questions.
Any questions of the applicants, anyone? Thank you. This is a public hearing, would anyone like to comment concerning this application for outdoor festival permit request to the Rotary Club of Winchester, Shenandoah Valley Apple Harvest Festival? Anyone at all? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing portion, how would the board like to handle this one?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion for approval of outdoor festival permit for the Rotary Club on the November, or September sixteenth and seventeenth.
Motion to approve, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
And the second? Is there any further discussion? Anyone? Supervisor Ewing?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion carries. Bring us to Item number four, public hearing, outdoor festival permit request of Concern Hotline, the Friday Fish Fry Celebration.
Last one, Mr. Chairman. This event also is held at the Winchester Harley-Davidson. It's been held out there for a number of years now, the date is September first. It is a benefit for Concern Hotline, and I know the applicant is represented here as well.
Thank you, sir. Anything the applicant would like to add?
Answer questions, Mr. Chairman.
Are there any questions of the applicant? Thank you, sir. Apparently not. How would the board like to handle this one?
Public hearing.
I move for approval.
Mr. Chairman, it's a public hearing.
Sorry, public hearing?
Public hearing.
I'm sorry, we'll get there. It's a public hearing. Would anyone like to comment concerning the outdoor festival permit request of the Concern Hotline for the Friday Fish Fry Celebration? Anyone at all? Thank you, we'll, seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing portion. How would the board like to handle this one?
I'll try again, Mr. Chairman, I'll move for approval of outdoor festival permit request of Concern Hotline at Grove Harley-Davidson.
Motion to approve, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
And the second, is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I would just say that these festivals that are held at Grove Harley-Davidson are always well-conducted, taken care of, a lot of traffic, but it's handled well, and they just do an excellent job.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments? Motion to approve, Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Ewing?
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion carries. That will bring us to relocated Item K, as the request for commercial pump and haul permit. Chairman, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is a request for a pump and haul permit for an existing commercial structure that's located at thirty-one forty-nine Front Royal Pike. The property is a point-six, six-acre property that contains a two thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven square foot structure that was built in nineteen forty-seven. The structure was previously utilized as a convenience store, but has closed since two thousand, two thousand and eleven. This is a request in the first step to reopen this convenience store. If the pump and haul permit is approved, the applicant will next be able to apply for a conditional use permit, and is seeking to re-establishing a non-conforming use, which was a country general store. If you turn your attention to the map on your left, you're pretty familiar with the area, it's on five twenty-two South. And that's kind of the layout of the area. We'll note that that's the, the property surrounded it is owned by a different entity, not the applicant tonight. Now, that's going to be a question, because as we go into the pump and hauls, before they can come before this board, it try not to exhaust any remedies, i.e. an easement or things of that nature for drain field. With that, there's a picture of the store right now, again, it's on the screen on the left. It's been shuttered like since the two thousand and eleven. This picture here is actually, shows the, there's a structure behind the store, and that's important, because that's going to, if you look through your agenda, that is actually on a drain field, as we speak today. The subject property has existing drain field system to attach resident, but not for the commercial structure, never had. The Health Department has concluded the onsite sewer disposal system cannot be supported by this property due to insufficient area available for required drain field in reserve. The property owner has been unable to attain an onsite easement, and that's why, like I said, the property that curves around it, they did approach their neighbors, and there was, that's why we're here tonight. Again, the property owners appear to have addressed all the requirements of the county code to utilize a pump and haul system for the property at thirty-one forty-nine Front Royal Pike. The property owner has established a relationship with Martin Pumping Service LLC to handle the pump and haul, and the decision for the board to supervise on this permit, commercial pump and haul system, is requested. The applicant is here tonight to answer any questions the board members may have, and I'll try to answer any questions that you have on this proposed pump and haul system. Thank you.
Any questions, Mr. Chairman?
I have one.
Supervisor Slaughter?
Mr. Chairman, I noticed in our packet, there was information from the Health Department regarding the well and an E. coli test on the existing well. Has that been performed?
To my knowledge, it has been performed. The applicant will also be able to answer, I could answer that to you, but yes, as we move forward, yes, it has, was part of the getting to this stage here, Mr. Slaughter.
And, and was that a satisfactory?
Yes, ma'am.
Report back to you?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
Other questions, Supervisor?
Mr. Chairman, is someone residing in the house at the present time?
I'm going to leave that to the applicant, I'm going to say, I think that, I've been at the site, I'm going to say that I think there is at this time, but I'm going to let the applicant speak to that.
Then is, if someone is residing there, then the current drain field is usable the way it is as a non-conforming property?
As is pointed out in your, in the staff report, yes, the folks, it is for the structure of the house that they're in right now, someone lived there, for instance, it's okay to reopen, not.
Reopen the store part is the issue.
Issue, yes, sir, we need the pump and haul, or they're requesting the pump and haul, sir.
Other questions, Mr. Chairman? Anyone? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Is there anything the applicant would like to add? Are there any questions of the applicant? Anyone? Thank you, ma'am.
One more question for staff.
Mr. Chairman, if you would, please, sir?
Sorry. Location of the pump and haul, has that been determined? And if, on that property, if the system runs over, where does it empty into?
That's good.
It appears to me, by looking at the property, it's going to, it's going to drain down along five twenty-two.
I'm going to have to, ah.
I mean, it appears the property slopes to the front.
It does slope to the front, yes, sir. Where they installed it with a permit, we would have to address that. To answer your question, it would be addressed through.
More than likely, then it's going to be five twenty-two.
More than likely, yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, if I may just add hopefully to that, that of course the board's approval then grants the authority to the Health Department to administer the approval, and of course, the ongoing regulation of that pump and haul, so.
And the design requirements.
Exactly, so it should be installed correctly, and in a manner that doesn't create any of those impacts that you just alluded to. Furthermore, for the applicant to come forward and open it up as a store, re-establish the non-conforming use, we have to go through the conditional use permit process, which provides the board additional assurances, if you will, through that process, that it will be done correctly.
Other questions, staff? Anyone? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
How would the board like to handle this one? Anyone?
There you go.
It's Sean E.
It's Sean E, and I'm, I'm at the point that I can't support it at this point. Pump and hauls are issues for me. I'm afraid I won't be making a motion, I'll let someone else make one if they would prefer.
Mr. Chairman? Supervisor Dunn?
Can this be referred back to one of the committees for further study?
No. Their only option, according to the Health Department, is the pump and haul. Further requested use.
Is there any other additional information that would be helpful?
They're, they're the state agency in charge of doing these investigations and making these decisions.
Okay. I'll ask Mr. Fisher a question. Mr. Fisher, what are your concerns?
Pump and hauls are not always as well-maintained as they should be. That's why I asked the question about if I just have issues with pump and hauls.
Okay.
And it's not like, the residence apparently can still be used under the existing drain field, but the business can't reopen. I think that's as good as it can be. In fact, Mr. Chairman, if you want a motion to deny, I will make that motion, since it seems like no one else is willing to.[1717.65]
We're here to make a decision.
I will make a motion to deny the-
So we have a motion to deny the request. Is there a second?
I'll make a second.
And a second, discussion?
My question, Mr. Chairman, is if at a future point in time something changes, can this, um, decision be reversed or a new decision be made?
Would require a new, new process, a new evaluation by the health department?
So-
Based, based on whatever the circumstances and information and requirements are at that time?
So this would not be a permanent situation, but it would, if, if this motion goes through, the applicant could come back and try to address some of the concerns that Mr. Fisher has, is that correct?
Reason why they couldn't come back should they choose to, they have to start the process over.
Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir?
I guess a question, if, if we deny this, are we going to tell the applicant specifically what our concerns are so that they might decide whether or not they wanna address those concerns and come back? Is-
Um, Mr. Lofton, the, the issue for me is if the house is currently available to be used under the current system to expand the use on a non-conforming property, even with a pump and haul, I don't think is the correct method. That's just my opinion, pump and hauls have- They are not, as, as much as the safety standards and everything else, they're not foolproof. And when that flows down onto the five twenty-two, it's gonna be an issue. Uh, I just think there might be other ways of dealing with this down the road, even though the adjoining property owners are not being cooperative at this time.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I, I certainly understand Supervisor Fisher's concerns, but being infinitely familiar with this pers- piece of property, that commercial adjunct to that house has been there for at least fifty years. And I'd like to see if the applicant couldn't come up with some way to revive that because it would certainly add to the economic, um, benefit of that particular community and to Frederick County overall. So I'd like to see if, if there are specific concerns that need to be addressed that we can let the applicant know what they are so that they may pursue remedies to that and come back with us.
Heard your comment. Is there any further discussion? Anyone? All right. The motion in second is to deny. Supervisor Ewing?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
No.
Supervisor Wells?
No.
Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, the motion carries, the application is denied. All right. That will bring us to an amendment to the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen physical year budget public hearing pursuant to section fifteen point two dash twenty-five oh seven of the Code of Virginia nineteen fifty as amended. Would the supervisor to hold the public hearing to amend the physical year seventeen eighteen budget to reflect school construction fund supplemental appropriation? The request is in the amount of twenty-eight thousand five hundred?
Twenty-
Twenty-eight million five hundred thousand for the, I was in a little dream world. Um, for the construction of the twelfth elementary school at Snowden Bridge.
Mr. Chairman, as you've indicated, this is a request from the school system for a supplemental appropriation in the amount of twenty-eight million five hundred thousand dollars for the construction of a twelfth elementary school at Snowden Bridge. Um, within their request, um, the board has resolved that, um, if approved, um, this, this funding would be in addition to the million and a half that was approved for architectural and engineering design. Um, the board, school board would construct the twelfth elementary school at Snowden Bridge in compliance with the regulations of the Board of Education and the Uniform Statewide Building Code. The school board would assure that the school design is approved in writing by the division superintendent in accordance with state law. The school board shall assure that the school plans are reviewed and approved by the chief building official in accordance with the Frederick County ordinance. And the board would assure that the schools cafeteria, gymnasium, library, and administrative offices are sized in accordance with a program capacity of six hun- hundred students in accordance with the Virginia Board of Education's regulations and the Virginia Department of Education guidelines for school facilities. And I would just point out, Mr. Chairman, that because of the amount of this request, um, we were required to hold a public hearing on the amount of this appropriation. And I know the school board is repreh- represented here, if you have questions of them.
Any questions? Staff or the school board? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to the public hearing. This is a public hearing. We'd ask that you come forward, share your thoughts, try to limit your comments to three minutes or less, please. If we could have your name and magisterial district. Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Mary Ann Johnson. I live in the Stonewall District, specifically the Snowden Bridge Development, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you about this tonight. We, the residents of the Snowden Bridge Development, are here tonight to express our strong desire, want, and need for this twelfth elementary school. The Frederick County Board of Supervisors approved the rezoning and pro offer statement for Snowden Bridge on September twenty-fourth, two thousand and three, with the opening sentence in the executive summary stating, quote, "The pro offers for Stevenson Village define the conditions and maintenance of a residential planned community based on smart growth principles. As envisioned, Stevenson Village will feature a school," end quote. Again, this was approved by the Board of Supervisors in two thousand and three, which is fourteen years ago. We, the residents of Snowden Bridge, have absorbed the additional costs of pro offers for public facilities when we purchased our homes and have paid our share of Frederick County real estate taxes. It is unacceptable, based on the additional burden, that we, as residents in the designated urban development area, paid in pro offers and real estate taxes to house our students, particularly elementary students, in modular classrooms outside the security of the building envelope. Furthermore, it is also unacceptable to transport students from within the planned high population density area to less rural parts of the community, county. The Frederick County Economic Development and North Authority has announced eight major businesses and an industry opening or expansions in the past year alone. And they will equal thirty-seven hundred jobs. The economic growth will accelerate the growth trend, particularly affecting our district. Growth is reality, we must be proactive. And we were wondering, is there a growth model that takes into account all of the commercial income that will be brought into the county by these businesses? The current capacity of Stonewall Elementary is five fourteen. As of this week, six hundred and nineteen students are enrolled. The entire third grade will be attending classes in the modular buildings, the trailers, that are outside the school envelope and are without bathrooms, forcing children to walk in the elements to the main school building. This is a huge risk from both a safety and health perspective. Because of kindergarten orientation tonight, there's many parents that couldn't be here tonight. And so, we have a petition signed by one hundred and ninety-five residents that strongly want what the school board is recommending. And I offered, this is-
Welcome to leave that with Mr. Tibbs.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Someone else? Thank you, sir.
My name is Eric Peterson and I live in the Stonewall District. A good evening, Chairman, members of the board. Tonight is no longer about the statistics, the facts, the figures, or our taxes. Tonight is about our children. Simply put, it's about all of the children of Frederick County. What can we as a community, this Board of Supervisors, do for our children? I know that several of the board members have children and grandchildren in our area. We have to make a decision about what is best for them to be good stewards of our society. Specifically, Stonewall Elementary has six hundred and nineteen students enrolled for the two thousand seventeen eighteen school year, while only having capacity for five hundred and fourteen of them. That means there are a hundred and five students in Stonewall this coming school year that they don't have room for. Therefore, the entire third grade will be attending classes in trailers with no bathrooms. They'll have to walk, likely unattended, to the main building to eat, use the restroom, attend art, go to P.E. I ask you, is this acceptable? Is this acceptable for our children? For me, and many if not all in the Stonewall District, that answer is a resounding no. Any further delay in building the school will cost tax, taxpayers millions of dollars due to the inflation and rising costs of construction. With a school that's overcrowded, any rezoning effort will only make, take, take away valuable time for our children and our families. In addition, of even more modular classrooms just add costs and prolongs the inevitable necessity of needing an additional school at an even greater cost. And to recap, the current growth, Navy Federal Credit Union is bringing fourteen hundred jobs, the FBI four hundred jobs, Amazon a thousand jobs, eighty-four lumber a hundred jobs, American Woodmark fifty-five jobs, Thermo Fisher Scientific fifty-seven, and then Procter and Gamble another seven hundred. The county must be proactive, not reactive. Standards of learning have changed and evolved over the past fifty years. An analogy was used comparing our schools to medical facilities. We cannot and will not build hospitals and cancer centers the way they were built fifty years ago because advances in medicine. Would we trust a new hospital built with nineteen fifties technology to treat our illnesses of today? No. The same can be said about our schools and education. Children and learning have evolved. With the needs of today's children, the schools adapt to meet those needs. We must treat our children with dignity and respect when it comes to their needs. Our children are our most precious possessions and they are the most underrepresented class. Who's gonna stand up and speak on their behalf? Tonight, this Board of Supervisors has well over a hundred years of combined public service. Supervisor Lofton, I think you have about thirty-six years. Supervisor Ewing, twenty-five years. Supervisor Dunn, over ten years. You are all intelligent, well-educated members of society. Let's give our children those same opportunities. The request for an extra one point five million is really a, a fraction of a penny's increase in our real estate taxes. Uh, you are willing to entertain twenty-seven million. I think a million and a half is not too much more for our children. And if you are present in the audience tonight and you are in support of this school, I'm curious if you'd please stand. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, thank you for the opportunity to share. My name is, uh, John Mark Jones, I live in Stevens City. My wife and I have four children enrolled in Frederick County schools. Being new to the area, it is our understanding that there is an issue with overcrowding in the district. While we aren't familiar with the extent of the overcrowding, we are familiar with the condition of the school that two of our children attend, and that is Ailer Middle School. As you probably know, renovations at Ailer have been talked about and needed for at least two decades. In two thousand and four, the Frederick County School Board put Ailer renovations on their capital improvements plan. Somehow, fourteen years later, it is still on there, unaddressed, and it's number four on the list this year. Earlier this year, the Ailer PTSO organized an informational meeting and walkthrough of Ailer to bring their concerns to the attention of the Frederick County Public School officials. The PTSO also provided documentation that included pictures of different areas of concerns at the school, as well as cases of teachers and students developing sinus problems, headaches, mold allergies, and asthma, which go away when they no longer have prolonged exposure to the building. My daughter continually had allergy and sinus issues while attending Ailer last year, but once school was out, her issues disappeared. I am not sure why other projects have continually taken precedent over Ailer when there is an obvious need for renovations, but it is time for that to stop. It is our hope that the Frederick County School Board will put Ailer renovations at the top of the current capital improvements plans and that you, the Board of Supervisors, would appropriate the necess- necessary funding for Ailer renovations before any other project. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Yes, sir. Dr. Lamanna?
John Lamanna, representing in the Frederick County School Board and Stonewall District. First of all, I'd like to thank the members of your board who attended, uh, convocation this morning. I know a number of you have busy schedules and the ones who are able to attend greatly appreciated. I know our teachers appreciated that as well. So thank you. Just a quick timeline that I'd like to go over. In December two thousand and sixteen, the school board requested an appropriation of thirty point nine million for an elementary school at Stone- Snowden Bridge. April twelfth, the bus, the Board of Supervisors indicated a willingness to consider a future appropriations of up to twenty-seven million. The school board worked on further reducing costs while maintaining quality and integrity of the building. June twentieth, the school board adopted a resolution forwarded to the Board of Supervisors, seeking appropriation for twenty-eight point five million. And this, in order to do this, reduced the size of the school to five hundred from six hundred students. Fast forward to tonight, it is a fact that the student growth is, is occurring and it does exist. The projections for steady continued growth are significant, are honest, and will overburden our current capacity. That being said, to delay the project means a five percent or greater increase in cost due to inflation. If the need is real, and it is, the delay will put a, a greater burden on our debt. The difference between the consideration of twenty-seven million versus the identified need of twenty-eight point five million is obviously one point five. The one point five million dollars increase in debt impact, as we know, is minimal. If you equate to such an increase to a tax increase, which would not be necessary, it is less than a quarter of a penny. If the decision is twenty-seven million versus the twenty-eight point five million, which the board believes is required to support five hundred students, the school board will have to reconsider the feasibility and the practicality of the project. As always, along with our common pride in Frederick County, we share the burden and responsibility to do what is best for our community today and for the future. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Kirk?
Good evening, my name is Joy Kirk. I'm the president of the Frederick County Education Association and a resident of the Back Creek District. Having taught at Ailer prior to the opening of Admiral Byrd and at Armel prior to the opening of Evendale, I have experienced teaching in overcrowded conditions. Overcrowded schools and classrooms are not conducive to peak learning. Teachers and staff are stretched to the limit and students do not get the individualized attention they deserve. Classes are held in non-class spaces, such as on stages, in closets, and in hallways. And yes, I have seen all of those. We all want what is best and we know that overcrowding is not best practice. We want to move forward and prevent more students from experiencing overcrowded classrooms and schools. In reviewing the Frederick County Economic Development Authority website, I noted the following headlines. Thermo Fisher expands in Frederick County, fifty-seven new jobs. Winchester Metal expands in Frederick County, seventeen new jobs. Amazon to create more than one thousand jobs in Frederick County. Eighty-four lumber will invest three point nine million, creating one hundred new jobs. Navy Federal Credit Union to create fourteen hundred new jobs and invest one hundred million. American Woodmark to invest thirty million in new headquarters operation, retaining three hundred and seventy-seven jobs, creating fifty-five new ones. FBI Central Record Complex, four hundred people will be employed. Positive business growth is good and it makes headlines. But these job opportunities mean we will have new families coming to our community. And new families will mean new students in our schools. I respectfully request, on behalf of our current and future students, to be proactive. Create learning environments that will benefit them and they have the potential to grow with our community. I believe there is no better investment than our future, the children of Frederick County. I encourage you, be visionaries. Do what is best for the children of today and the children of tomorrow. The time has come to invest in the twelfth elementary school. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Rebecca Morrison, Gainesboro District. Uh, my husband was unable, uh, to be here tonight. His name is Alan Morrison, these are his words. Number one, you previously and very generously agreed to a twenty-seven million dollar limit. This is still too much what is actually needed, but so be it. You have made the commitment. You should stick to this. A twelfth elementary school is not needed at this time. There are numerous options available to the school board, but they choose to simply ignore anything that is not uh, of their proposal. There are over eight hundred empty seat in the current plan. Why build a five hundred seat school? The seats are simply not where the school board wishes them to be. Again, um, the school board finds it inconvenient to redistrict the county efficiently to use the available seats and resources. The school blank, plan for Snowden Bridge is extravagant. The features and gadgets included in this plan do not benefit education, but rather the whims of a designer and the ego of a superintendent. To reduce the cost of the existing plan does not require reducing the size and the seats. This is simply a ploy to raise guilt of any who may oppose the plan and guilt you into approving more money. To reduce the cost, cut out all the gadgets, glass walls, and unnecessary open spaces. There are schools in the good old USA where glass walls, um, are installing blinds and building, uh, them over with bricks. and building them over with bricks. It simply doesn't work. This is common sense, but the school board is lacking any common sense. The school board should be intent on discipline problems, supporting our teachers, and actual education efforts, reducing the paperwork, and eliminating the horde of administrative positions that absorb salary funds that should go to teachers. I request you deny any increases in funding for the 12th Elementary School. Frederick County simply does not have enough money to satisfy the school board. We should be focused on quality education and not glitz and award-winning designs. So, I ask you to deny. Also, I have an education degree from JMU. I used to volunteer at Apple Pie Ridge in second grade for junior grade books. And yes, my classes were in a closet, and the children sat on the floor. And the children participated. There was no discipline problems, and they had critical thinking. And it worked. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm Ned Firenold, a resident of Stonewall District and a grandparent of Frederick County's school students. I've been following the budget request to the school board for the past year, and I'm appalled at their lack of concern for the taxpayers of Frederick County. They now wish you to approve a total of $30 million for an unneeded 12th Elementary School. What is wrong with Dr. Lamano and his associates? Do they have no sense of values? We appeal to you, our supervisors, to stand strong between us and this out-of-control group of bureaucrats. Remember when they wanted $130 million? Now Frederick County's schools rank in the lower half of Virginia districts. Seventy-seventh out of 130. What I cannot understand is why the Board of Education plans to spend $30 million when they have an empty school on Linden Drive, eight miles, 15 minutes from the center of Snowdon Bridge Development. This school is in good condition, includes dining facilities, an athletic field, and a gymnasium. The Board of Education seems to be able to do nothing to really improve the quality of education of our students, but they sure like to construct expensive, unnecessary buildings. Please, just say no. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name is Karina Nagib. I live in the Stonewall District. I am here to express my support for the 12th Elementary School. And I'm sorry, I don't have anything specifically prepared, but I just wanted to say that each year we delay the 12th Elementary School. We are increasing the cost of the school because of inflation. So, right now, the school board wants 28.5 million for the school. If we delay that, then we are going to continue, the price is going to continue to rise because of inflation. I speak to you as a resident of Snowdon Bridge, a parent, and a teacher. I, my son is a rising third grader. He went to Stonewall last year. He will not be attending Stonewall next year. He's going to be going to a private school. I was not comfortable with him spending his year in a trailer in overcrowded conditions. I am a product of public school, and I believe strongly in public school, but I'm not sending my child to this school. I don't think, and the thing is that not everyone's in my position where they have the choice, and I don't think that's right. One thing I also wanted to add with overcrowding, overcrowding increases aggression within a classroom and amongst students. If you have more students in a room, there's going to be more aggression and more problems. Open spaces are conducive to the learning environment. Some students can be working on one thing while other students are working on another thing. I also wanted to speak to the importance of school design. I know that some people are against the school design because it is new and different than what we have currently in Frederick County. According to research done by Penn State, they have found that school facilities have a profound impact on both teacher and student outcome. Lighting, for example, they have a list, a long list of different things, but lighting was what stood out to me, and I know that the new elementary school is supposed to have natural light. Research has shown that artificial lighting has a profoundly negative effect on student learning, and that students who are in natural light the majority of the school day, they perform 20% better in math on standardized tests, and 26% better in reading on standardized tests. So, I just want to, again, as a parent, and a teacher, and a community member of Snowdon Bridge, taxpayer of Frederick County, I owned my first home here. I'm originally from California, but I've made Virginia my home. I love this county and this city. And I would strongly urge you to vote in favor of this elementary school. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, well done. Who else? Anyone? Doctor's fine.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I just want to thank you for your support of our schools and our children in the continued dialogue over the last several months focusing on the 12th Elementary School. As you recognize, our school board has worked very hard over the last several months to reduce the overall square footage, and have made a number of reductions to get to the $28.5 million request. I'll just add, very, been an exciting day today with our convocation. It's been a great week for Frederick County Public Schools. Just this week, our NIT school rankings, which is highly valued across America and certainly in Virginia, they were just released, and they highlighted the school divisions in Virginia. There are over 130 school divisions. And as, in terms of our ranking, we actually were ranked 25th of 130-plus school divisions. So, I want to extend my appreciation to board members for your support, and most importantly, to our teachers and support staff that serve our students so well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
My name's Dana Newken. I'm in the Gainesboro District. You, the Board of Supervisors, have the duty to ensure that the capital funds that you allocate are wisely and responsibly spent. Now, given the recent fourth high school design debacle, I suggest that it's reasonable that you require the school administration and the school board to provide written design and cost documentation for public review prior to approving capital funds, so that it may be confirmed that they've taken all measures within their charter to mitigate the need, for example, adjusting school boundaries, and that you may assure the justification and utilization, or utilitarian nature, of the project. How do you justify amending capital funding when you have no basis for the request? This is not about whether or not to build the school. It's about requiring a substantive basis for their request. For to paraphrase a deputy school administrator recently, the nice thing about not having justifying documentation is that you can't be held accountable.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Again, I'm George Hughes, Gainesboro District. And I hadn't heard what Dana was going to speak about, but that's been my exact point for all this time that I've been coming to speak to you people, is because we never justify anything. Yeah, we're all, everybody in this room is going to need a new automobile in the next four or five years, right? Do we start buying it today? Okay? That's where I'm coming from. We don't know what we need. And they talk about all these people coming in, but how many people in Berkeley County, and Jefferson County, and West Virginia are going to be coming to Amazon? How many people from Hampshire, Hardy, Mineral? Lord knows where they're going to travel to, because it's going to be closer than where they're driving to the district. We don't know how many are going to move in. And as far as I can tell, based on previous performance of schools that we have built, ain't finished one yet. We still got a boondoggle out here in Gainesboro where they can't get to the damn school because the roads don't work, no site access. As far as I can tell, from what I've read in the paper, people in Snowdon Bridge don't even want the school. They don't want the school buses. It's too much hassle. So, we need to have some kind of plan, some kind of notification of what they are really going to do and what they really want. And I thought it was a done deal when we did the budget last year that we were looking to spend $28 million, not $30 million. And a million and a half is already in the budget, correct? A million and a half dollars is there for them to do the planning. Far as I can tell, they ain't done a damn thing. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry, you all work it out.
I'm just short and sweet. My name is Lauren, I live in Snowdon Bridge, and thank you for having us tonight. I don't really appreciate our children being compared to cars. Our children need way more than us, you know, a car purchase. That's way more of an investment than just having a car payment. And it's going to increase. It's proven these children are growing, our neighborhood is growing, there's neighborhoods coming in. And respectfully, I want this school. And clearly, there's people here who want the school. So, what you read in the paper is not always true. So, we're here to ask you for the school. We have petition for the school. We want the school, regardless of the bus, and regardless of arguments that will continue to be had on bus situations, and, you know, traffic and things like this. We want the school for our children, and that's our main concern. So, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, my name is Jennifer Myers, and I'm short. And I live in the Stonewall District, and I'm here to speak to you in support of the school board, CIP, particularly funding for the 12th Elementary School. We all know that there's opposition to the school funding. When I consider the meetings I have attended, it could be included that the Board of Supervisors is putting more value on the small number of squeaky wheel citizens who are able to attend to meetings more frequently than parents who are trying to balance advocating for and raising our families. It is difficult to attend bimonthly meetings while raising three children. However, over this course of the school funding debate, many parents did just that. Interestingly enough, a review of meeting minutes from December 14th, when the CIP was introduced, to April 12th, when the board made its decision, it showed that 39 individual residents spoke in favor of the CIP plan, whereas only 10 were against it, not including repeat speakers. Not to mention, Snowdon Bridge alone gathered a petition with over, with 195 more signatures in only two days. The opposition will complain that attendance in Frederick County is flat. However, reality will tell us this is not the case. Stonewall has added four new classrooms this year. The entire third grade was moved to modular classrooms that were not in use last year. Snowdon Bridge is not even close to being completed. I understand your predecessors left you with having to pay for failing buildings and new construction, but the carousel of progress is still turning, and Frederick County is continuing to grow. With several high-density housing communities were approved, Snowdon, expansion of Canor Estates, Musket Ridge, Hyatt Run, Severn Village, Twin Lakes, Wakeland Manor, Meadows Edge, and the new unnamed one on 522, that, those are just the ones off the top of my head since I moved back to the area in 2004. With all due respect, I could not have known how you cannot see the foresight that this was going to be needed 20 years later. I will admit, it seems most of you, I guess it's not 20, it's only 10, sorry. I will admit, most of you agree about the growth and know these improvements are needed. The problem I see here is that you think there are other options to alleviate growth. I do not believe this is an option with, in reference to redistricting, because we are sandwiched between two other over-capacity schools. So, it'd be a lot more than just redistricting us. And that the schools are extravagant. This may be true, but I want to express that the majority of my peers agree that the days of cheapening our schools to save a dollar should be over. And we expect more for our kids. Nice schools with up-to-date technology have a positive effect on our students and our community. We are not in the 1900s anymore. It's 2017, and progress needs to be made. We need to catch up. Dr. Savine and Dr. Orndoff were hired to bring to Frederick County into the 21st century with our school system and give our kids the best education. They successfully delivered the new middle school with construction costs below the average cost per square foot, and that school is outperforming other schools in energy savings. It's time to trust them, move forward before we fall any further behind. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Allison Behan. I live in the Stonewall District, specifically Snowdon Bridge Development. First thing I want to mention, as previously noted from somebody else, that Snowdon Bridge doesn't want the school. I just ask, any Snowdon Bridge resident in support, please stand. That's nobody. I'm sorry, just saying. And then, anybody else continuing to stand, and anybody else who lives in Frederick County that's in support. Just saying. Okay. In the state of Virginia, we have an education system built to teach the public, the entire public. Our schools are required to plan for the entire population, including those with disabilities and those that choose to be educated elsewhere. The school board cannot predict who will choose to opt out of public education, so they need to be prepared for when they do attend. A great example of this is a shift of a portion of the homeschooling population to the public schools, from the primary grades to the secondary grades. Some private schools only educate through the eighth grade. So, the county needs to plan for them to be able to attend the public high schools if they choose to. In order to plan for the entire population, schools are given recommendations for classroom capacity based on square footage and recommendations for class sizes based on grade level. These recommendations have changed over the years to account for the variety of students that are taught, including those with developmental delays, students on the autism spectrum, and those that are bound to a wheelchair. Some of these students are, also require aids. The design of this school is different from the county's other elementary schools. The design is based on solid research showing the benefits of natural light and classroom size and flexibility. It is looking at our entire population, including all children with differing abilities and education requirements. These students were not included in the classrooms of our youth. That is a big, positive change in education. It also means that we need to look at space requirements differently. Access to education is not a luxury, and neither is this school. I do not think we would be here today if the county simply presented another Evendale or Greenwood Mill. These schools have many windowless classrooms, which is shown to have a negative impact on student learning. Access to natural light can also be linked to discipline problems. Technology has changed since then. This impacts how our students are taught, and it also has an impact on infrastructure and space requirements. The school board has stated that there is a shift in education philosophy, which in turn has impacted the design. A vote of no for funding is a vote against improvements in education based on solid research. In regards to Snowdon Bridge specifically, I did contact the three builders that are in our neighborhood. And in 2006 alone, 110 homes were built. 2017 to date, 70 homes were built. That is not flatline. That is growth. And it's inevitable. We need this school. Snowdon Wall is overcrowded, Red Bud's overcrowded. You're not going to just fix everything with rezoning. You're not just going to rezone Snowdon Bridge. You're going to rezone from everywhere because of the growth everywhere. So, you're going to have to redistrict, excuse me, rezone every couple of years because of this growth. And that is not the answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, my name's Brandy Hammond from Shawnee District. I don't live in the area, obviously, of the proposed 12th Elementary School in the Snowdon Bridge area, but I'm here because I care about all the students of this county, not, not just my area, not just where, where my girls go. So, as a citizen of this county who supports quality public education for all students countywide, I ask you to please fully fund the requests from the school board to build the 12th Elementary School. And I also have something to read. I wanted to discuss some design elements of the building. Besides the design recommendations of the Virginia Department of Education, school buildings must also follow the International Building Code, which tackles items such as fire safety, egress, and accessibility. Before sprinklers were required by building code, all classrooms had to have windows. This was a fire safety and egress issue. After years of building windowless classrooms, thanks to modern technology... After years of building windowless classrooms, thanks to modern technology, we are seeing a shift in school design back to windows and access to daylight. Research shows that daylight has a direct impact on student success and behavior. Access to daylight allows for energy and cost savings in lighting. Atrium height spaces allow for daylight to enter the interior cores of buildings. This allows for a smaller footprint, which means less square footage and cost savings. Natural light is not, and should never, be considered a luxury in a building where children spend six and a half hours of their day. Many of the county's elementary schools have classrooms without any windows. There are days that students in these classrooms only see natural light through a skylight in a hallway on the way to a resource class. These are short minutes in the course of a long day. A design element of the Snowden Bridge School that changed for cost-cutting measures is the gabled roof. This would have allowed for a standing seam metal roof, which has a lifespan twice that of the flat membrane roofs we see in the county. The cost is higher upfront, but less than the two membrane roofs it would require to outlast the metal roof, according to maintenance professionals. Visually, this is different than what the county has designed in the past, but the School Board is looking into long-term cost savings. A cost-saving measure by the county has been to use trailers for our students. These spaces have much of the same negative impacts that windowless classrooms have. I will note that the entire third grade of Stonewall is going to be housed in trailers this year. Elementary students spend hours in their classrooms. If they want to get to the restroom, which is likely over the span of five hours, these eight- and nine-year-old children will need to go outside in the elements without supervision to a bathroom in the building. This has safety issues as well as lost instructional time issues. These are meant to be temporary structures. This is not how school planning should be done in our county. We need to grow our schools with our development. We need to look to long-term cost savings, even if it means a higher upfront cost. And this statement was prepared by Carrie Ann Kite, also of the Shawnee District, who was unable to be here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone? Yes, ma'am.
I wasn't planning on speaking, but my name's Cheryl Hanson, and I'm in the Stonewall District. And I'm a parent and a grandparent of children that are not in the Frederick County District. So I don't have a personal child interest in this, but I do have a citizen interest in it. The new design of the school will help to increase our standings with the schools in the state and the nation. And we do know that there is a need for this school. And there will be fewer buses, as it will be walking distance for some of the students. And yes, some of us do plan for our futures. And the costs don't go down. We know that. So to build the school now makes sense for the citizens of Frederick County. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Is there anyone?
Good evening. My name is Brittany Cummings. I am a member of the Stonewall District. My question to you, Board of Supervisors, is why? Why are you serving on the board? For personal reasons? For family reasons? Think about that. Are you going to expect your children, as students or grandchildren? Let's see, it's now 2017. When you were in elementary school, sixties, times have changed. I am a teacher. We are teaching children for the 21st century, not the 1960s. We require different resources. The students are learning. I see an iPad. How many of you had to have your grandchildren teach you how to use your iPad? Times are changing. We need our schools to change as well. I ask that you please fully fund the building of the 12th Elementary School. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone? Last call. And we'll close the public hearing. Now would the Board like to handle the request?
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Wells.
I would like to move to amend the fiscal year 2017-2018 budget to reflect the school construction fund supplement appreciation in the amount of twenty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars for the construction of the 12th Elementary School at Snowden Bridge.
Mr. Chairman. You mean twenty-eight million?
What did I say? Twenty-eight thousand? Please. I had a hope. Excuse me, twenty-eight million, five hundred thousand. At Snowden Bridge. In addition, I would like to keep the four restrictions that were attached to the original motion passed on April the 12th, 2017 by the Board.
All right, we've heard the motion. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
And the second. I would open discussion. Anyone?
Were those conditions, the six hundred students and the fifteen years?
It was the fifteen years, they're in front of you. And the original capacity, which was six hundred. And if the capacity was reduced, it was still, it was to be designed and constructed to support the original capacity. Discussion? Chairman. Supervisor Dunn.
This has been a long day. It's been a long week. It's been a long month. I just want to walk through, from my perspective, some of the issues that we're hearing. We've heard pros and cons here. I'll make a couple of comments, and then we'll go from there. First of all, I hope, we should not actually be here. And the reason I make the comment is that this morning, this evening, we've had lots of comments, both pro and con. If we have another project like this, I would like to go and see the Board of Supervisors and the School Board on the same stage, for example, at Millbrook High School, along with the administrator of the schools and the administrator of the county, and have a discussion with some of the questions that were being asked here. I've gotten lots of emails and phone calls, pro and con. I spent the last couple of weeks trying to get answers. I appreciate Dr. Orndorf taking the time to go and see me. I know that others have done the same thing. And some of the questions I'd asked are as follows, just so you have an idea of where we're coming from, or at least I'm coming from. Please confirm that we own the land. So Frederick County owns the land. There's no cost there. What specifically is covered in the proposed school costs? The site preparation. If so, how much? What's the cost of a building? What's the furnishings for a school? Is the school one-story or two-story? Can we see a proposed plan for the school? Does the building have a long hallway in design similar to Gainesboro Middle School? How similar or dissimilar? Would Dr. Slomond, Savine, and Orndorf be open to discussion on this in depth? Would the School Board, my question to the School Board is, if you build a functional, traditional, I, U, T, or H, or modified design, what is the cost? Then if you add certain features, what are the additional costs? If you respect a function, if you reject a functional design, what are you gaining for the change, and what is the additional cost or potential savings? Does a twenty-eight and a half million dollar request include furnishings for the school, or is that an additional cost? Please address why you believe that building a new school, instead of redrawing school boundaries, is a better option. If we do build a new school, was the architect giving cost, and if so, what were they? Did the architect consider a one-story building with a large footprint versus a two-story building, which would have had a smaller roof for cost savings? Did the School Board consider duplicating an existing school, such as Greenwood or Red Bud, which would have saved architectural design costs? Both schools are relatively new. Why or why not? Did the School Board consider one or more architectural firms to drive down competition costs? Would you explain what is being bought for twenty-eight and a half million, and what adjustments would be made from the original thirty-four million? That would be helpful. So, I've tried to go through and answer a lot of questions. It's not an easy situation. In addition, Mr. Chairman, so right now we have a school which one and a half million dollars has been put in. Couple of months ago, the Board of Supervisors said that we would put in up to twenty-seven. The request is now for twenty-eight and a half. In Loudoun County, in February of 2017, six months ago, an elementary school was built for nine hundred and eighty-eight students for twenty-four point three million dollars, at a two-hundred-seven-dollar, two-hundred-seven-dollar-per-square-foot capacity. And just so we don't play numbers with this, in that proposal, which comes from the Virginia Department of Education, they were assuming twenty-four students in a classroom, up to the upper grades. If you adjust that for what the county, the Board of Superv, no, sorry. If you adjust that for what the school administration wants, which is approximately eighteen or nineteen students in K one through three, and I believe it's twenty-two students in K's in four and five, that figure comes down by about seventeen percent, which is still more than a cost greater, the cost would be less than what we're doing today. In Henry County, there's a school there that was built in July 2016, one year ago, for nineteen point six million for seven hundred and seventy-six students. In Fairfax County, at Fort Belvoir Elementary, you have a school of five hundred and seventy-six students, built for seventeen point three million. And that was from two years ago, not one year ago. The reason I make the comments is that we're all trying to be cost-conscious and trying to serve a need. And this should not necessarily be, if you don't give us enough money, you're bad. Or if you give us, or if we don't give you the money, you're good. This is trying to solve a problem collectively. A year ago, Mr. Wells made a comment that we are one community, and we need to chat together, as opposed to back and forth. I'm going to have a hard time, Mr. Chairman, with this additional one and a half million dollars. I was told it's only a one and a half million dollars. It's a fraction of a penny, et cetera. But I have constituents who have told me that the additional cost we've had in two years is hurting them. And so, when you add for only another million, another million, another million, as Everett Dirksen said, former Senate Minority Leader, after a while, it adds up to real money. If we approve this for whatever amount, I would strongly encourage the Board, the School Board, to do all they can to drive the costs down, to get a good contractor, who could be niggardly on price, who can force a contractor to say, you know what? You want the bid? It's going to have to be lower. That's what we have to work together for. One other comment, Mr. Chairman. The comment was made on redistricting, and I've wrestled with that. Snowden Bridge, according to the county planners, will probably fill out in a three-to-seven-year timeframe, meaning you're going to have enough students, enough buildings there to have a school. It's going to take about two years to build that school. So if we build it today, you're going to have overcapacity for a year or two, and then you're going to be starting to fill that in. I can live with that. If we had a major recession, it's out ten years. I could not live with it. So from my perspective, I'm expecting that this population growth will fill out in a three-to-five-year timeframe. Therefore, I think that a school is appropriate. A gentleman here made the comment about Linden School, and that was a good comment, which I hadn't thought through, and I would have liked to have seen an answer before tonight. So, I've just made some comments on explaining how, you know, my thought process behind this. You're welcome to disagree or agree with me. But I'll just make the comment that we have another school coming up, of any nature. I'd really encourage both Boards to get together and chat with an open audience, without a three-minute conference item. And the questions that you're asking us, we can have a dialogue back and forth with. And the other comment is that if another school is built, whatever footprint's being done this time, duplicate it. It saves a million and a half dollars or so in design costs. If we design a school now that's good and functional, I don't see a need for another design in a couple of years. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Further discussion? Anyone? Supervisor Fisher.
Mr. Chairman, Board members, I just stated upfront that I'm not going to be able to support the twenty-eight and a half million dollars. Going back to the Board's directive a few months ago at twenty-seven, with the population and the years restricting funds for it. You know, I've had to read in the newspaper of twenty-eight and a half million dollars. Nobody has communicated with us, in my opinion, to discuss why that occurred. And, you know, the continuing delay by the school system on this kind of thing is there adding to the inflation cost on this. You know, in the past, inputs have been given to the school systems for issues regarding construction projects for years through committees and work sessions. In the past, recommendations seem to have been and were included in projects, but lately, with the new middle school and the projected 12th Elementary School, not so. We should not be in the business of building architecturally award-winning schools, but design them for the highest academic standards. And one example is the new middle school. It's an award-winning, architecturally aesthetic building, but it's very poorly designed for acoustics in the music and the athletic areas. If that's architecturally award-winning, it must be for something that's not functioning in the school. However, the Commonwealth's process allows for the Board of Supervisors to fund school projects, and the school system to operate and construct facilities. It is not the Board of Supervisors' responsibility to micromanage these projects. The Board's only issue and method for controlling these costs is the funding for the school projects and for budgets. It's our only method, is our budgets. I think twenty-seven million dollars is adequate, in my opinion, for a six hundred to six hundred and fifty student-capacity elementary school. Twenty-seven million dollars will also fund a new design envelope for the building, but in not like the using the existing envelope that they're using. It's just, it's not going to work with that. I think this Board should not fund excessive spaces, high ceilings, community rooms, excessive glass, high cost of finishes and fixtures. I think we have a duty to have this money invested properly for our taxpayers. And I just think it's our responsibility.
Further discussion, anyway. Supervisor Lofton.
Mr. Chairman, I know that the members of the Board here have had many discussions, asked many questions, and meetings with school personnel. And so there's been a lot of thought going into this. I struggle with the fact that we have committed to building a new elementary school. We've set a limit on the price, and the School Board has come back to say they can't meet that. Several things I find interesting is that we're cutting the population of the school by sixteen percent, but we're only cutting the cost of the school ten percent. Now, I realize there's not a linear relationship between that, but it seems like there ought to be a closer relationship to that. I am continually dismayed that we're building schools to the newest recommendation of the Department of Education, which seems to be playing a chess game with no real winner in this, except them. Are you telling me that, I was just looking, in 1969, we put a man on the moon. In 1974, two men, Steve Jobs and Steve Wozniak, invented a, or formed a company that most of us couldn't live without today. So I'm asking myself, did it really matter that they had a classroom that was seven hundred square feet as opposed to six hundred and thirty square feet? I don't know that it's the size of the classroom, but the size of the heart and the mind of the teacher that teaches these children. And I think that we have some of the best teachers that you will find any place in this nation. So, to me, I'm dismayed that the School Board doesn't say, what size classroom works for us? Not try to build to the state's latest recommendation, because we'll never meet that target. They will continue to move that target. And so I believe, as Supervisor Fisher has said, we can build this school. We can build it at the capacity it should be for twenty-seven million dollars.
Further discussion, anyone?
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Ewing.
I would just like to echo Supervisor Fisher and Supervisor Lofton's comments. I really don't want to add much to it, other than the fact that in Tuesday's Winchester Star, Karen Vance wrote a commentary regarding the school constructions. And I think she pretty well put it in a form that meets my position on it. I think we're a little ahead of schedule in trying to build it. I think we're overpriced in building it. I think there's cuts that need to be made. At this point, I just, I can't support the motion.
Further discussion, anyone? Anyone? All right, we're ready to vote. The motion is for twenty-eight million, five hundred thousand for the 12th Elementary, with the four restrictions as originally adopted and are offered to consider. Supervisor Dunn? I mean, sorry, I'm sorry, Supervisor Ewing.
No.
Supervisor Dunn?
Nay.
What is it?
Nay.
Thank you, sir. Supervisor Fisher?
No.
Supervisor Lofton?
No.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion fails. Chair votes aye, motion fails. Anyone else like to consider a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I wouldn't make a motion, this resolution, just by changing it from 28,500 to 27 million.
Second.
Motion and second is for 27 million even with the four restrictions?
Mr. Chairman, if, you know, if the schools want to waiver on the, on the capacity, I would let that be at their discretion, if they can get it done for 600.
Left them that discretion. The four restrictions left them that discretion.
I just wanted--
Required them to build the support structures--
Right.
--to support the ultimate capacity. I'm not trying to put words in your mouth. I want you to clarify your motion.
That's good to verify, though, but you're correct.
27 with the restrictions? Thank you, sir. And a second? All right, any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, if this motion passes, I'd like the Board to consider working with the Treasurer's Office to consider, not necessarily to have an absolute, but at least to consider putting down a down payment on this. For example, putting down a million or $2 million. We just have raised taxes in the last couple of years. And instead of having an increasing debt situation, I'd like to see that debt situation go down. So just the way when you buy a home, you put down money upfront, and then you go and take out a mortgage, I'd like to see the county consider putting some type of money down, and then taking out a mortgage less than the 27 million, if this is approved. And just remember, this is a 28.5 million school with a design cost. So when Mr. Fisher talks about 27, we've already spent a million and a half, so it's 28.5. Secondly, if this motion passes, and if there is a bid to go out and seek bonds, I'd like the School Board to consider having bonds that do not have a prepayment penalty, because I'd like to at least have the consideration for the possibility of paying this off in less than 20 years, if the growth that occurs in this county occurs. The national government, the state government, local government, all seem to grow. They all seem to incur more debt. I'd like to see if this local government can reduce its debt. I'd like to see if this local government can go and save money and then spend versus borrow money, and then have to have increased taxes, et cetera. So I'd just like to make those comments on my thoughts, that if this motion passes, that be considered. Thank you.
Further discussion, anyone? Are we ready to vote? Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Ewing?
No.
Chair votes no. Motion carries. I'd like to remind everyone, because the discussions vary so much, that we didn't create the system that we all work under. By code of Virginia, the only authorization the Board of Supervisors has towards school funding is how much they get. It is against the law for us to attempt to influence how they spend it. In the same way, their job is to determine what their money that the Board authorizes and appropriates, how it's spent. That's their job, they're elected officials by code of Virginia, that's their job, exclusively their job. All right, we'll bring us to-- For liaison reports, are there any? Citizen comments, any issue, are there any? Or the supervisors' comments, are there any?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I was fortunate enough today to have the time to attend the convocation of the opening of the school year at Millbrook, and it was an exhilarating and wonderful experience. You leave there prepared and ready to walk out the door and put your hands together and go to work. Very proud of everything that happened. Teacher of the Year was selected. It's just a lot of good things to see so many energetic people in one room, working for the youth of our county. And also, we, I was fortunate enough to attend two ribbon cuttings on the EDA's successes in bringing in new companies and expansion of new companies, and it was just a good day, a good positive day for me, and I wanted to share that with everybody, congratulate both our businesses and our school system for everything they do. They do an excellent job. So that was all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to echo Supervisor Wells's comments as well. It was a wonderful experience being at convocation this morning, and the enthusiasm of the teachers, the dedication of our teachers, it warms your heart to see such enthusiasm. And the Teacher of the Year Award was amazing. Suzanne Miller, did I get that correct? She was outstanding, and I think any student in Frederick County would be blessed to have her as a teacher. She was truly amazing. Also, attending the ribbon cuttings this morning, two of them, of course, were in the Stonewall District. 84 lumber, which will be bringing an additional for, approximately $4 million in capital to Frederick County, as well as jobs for Frederick County and the surrounding areas, which is a wonderful impact to our community. And the fact that they would locate in Frederick County, I think, is amazing, given the options they have. They're in 30 different states throughout the United States, and they chose Frederick County to make their investment. So that was a very good feeling to be a part of that today. Our governor was here as well. Also, Kingspan made a $25 million investment in a company in the Stonewall District that is already up and operational, and would add 15 new jobs. Announced today that they had purchased adjoining acreage to the property, about seven, over seven acres, and will also be looking towards future expansion in Frederick County. So I think it speaks to the business-friendly environment of our community, and from all the people that I spoke with there, their hats were off to our Frederick County residents, and how friendly and open-armed we are to welcome them to our community. Also, I had the privilege of attending National Night Out at Snowden Bridge last, was it last week? Time goes by so quickly, and today has been a whirlwind. So it was an outstanding affair. It was nice to see families out together, various public groups. The sheriff's office was there demonstrating dogs, the dog service we have, there to talk to the residents as far as, I guess, identification for their children, and just a very, very positive experience. And I thank you all for reaching out to me and inviting me. It was very well organized. I think it would be the first of many more to come. And there were so many young children, hence the reason that I truly think we need a school, and I just can't say enough good things. So thank you all for inviting me. That was my--
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Supervisor Lofton.
If I may, I hate to put a damper on what Supervisor Slaughter and Wells have just said, but I think I need to report, as at the Department of Social Services Board meeting on Tuesday, yesterday morning, I learned that because of the estate code change, the department will be revising its operations mode to address the sad side note of the epidemic going on around the country and in Frederick County, and that is the drug epidemic. The very saddest part about this is they're addressing the substance-exposed infants, which I think is the most distressing part of this heroin epidemic. So I just want to report that they will be changing their, the mode. Their state is actively looking at how we can better identify and address those infants who are born substance-exposed, and deal with the aftermath of that. So I thought that was important to highlight that, so people know that it affects more than just the people who are taking the drugs, but the infants who are part of that person who is taking the drugs.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
We just voted to approve a school. On a close vote, I want to strongly encourage the Board, the School Board, to get a contractor who will be as hard-nosed as he can to keep the price under what we just appropriated. As I said earlier, I cited other schools in Northern Virginia that were costless. I think that we will need a school in the next few years. It's going to take two years to build, and as I said before, in a three-to-seven-year period of time, it'll probably fill out. I'd strongly encourage the school administration to do all they can to keep that cost under that. In addition, there are a number of teachers here. We appreciate what you're trying to do, but recognize that taxpayers are funding that as well, and so just work together with us. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else? And I'd like just a moment, and thank you all for coming out, for participating, for sharing your thoughts, desires, and so forth with the Board. We know that you've taken time away from, from personal time, from family time, from your children, to come out and participate. It's very important. It's helpful, each and every one of you, and we encourage you to continue, and we thank you for that. Hope you all have a great evening. Supervisor Fisher?
I'll move for adjournment, Mr. Chairman.
Motion is second to adjourn. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Thank you, and we'll stand adjourned.